But though, I'm sorry, I'm going to put those matters off until, um, until the next meeting. Uh, second on the agenda is a public hearing for seventeen eighty-two Middlesex Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Basil and Joanne, Karen and Stacius for site plan review for a project located at the addresses listed above. The project proposes to raise three existing buildings, two of which are single-family residences, one located at Sixth Wood Street and the other at seventeen nineteen Columbia Street. The other building to be raised is the beauty salon located at seventeen eighty-two Middlesex Street. Redevelopment of the site includes two commercial buildings totaling seven thousand four hundred one square feet, providing five storefronts each approximately fifteen hundred square feet in size. The project spreads twenty-nine parking spaces over two lots with access from Wood Street, one with fifteen spaces and the other with fourteen spaces. The project is located in the regional retail zoning district and requires site plan review under section eleven dash four of the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear the case for the proponent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, at this time, we'd request a continuance if we could to the next meeting. We have several items we'd like to work out with the professional staff and the engineering staff to tweak our plan a little bit more. And I'd also like to say you've lost a great viewer when Mr. Linehan passed away. Many times if I were before this board or another televised board, he'd always call me up and say, Jim, you did a good job, or you could have worked on your delivery, or you could have worked on something else. So he sat at home and really enjoyed these meetings. This particular project, he would call me up every time and critique me and say different things, and it was always positive. So he truly was a great man, and I wouldn't throw that around loosely either. He really was. He was a legend. He really was a giant.
He certainly was.
So if we could continue, I'd appreciate it.
There's a request for continuance to the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We allow the petitioner to continue to the next meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jess says yes.
Would it be at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
It'll be at the next meeting.
Do we, Aaron, do you have that calendar for the next meeting?
Um, I think it's August twenty-first. It's the third Monday of August.
August seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Because we have neighbors here and their representatives, so it'll be August seventeenth at six-thirty. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. August seventeenth.
Seventeenth, excuse me.
Under new business, we have a pre-application session, two oh eight Trotting Park Road. The board will conduct an informal review of a proposal to subdivide a parcel located at the above address and the extension of an existing driveway to provide access to a single-family structure to be constructed in the newly-created parcel of land. The driveway will provide access to three single-family residences upon completion. I'll note this is not a public hearing. The opinions of the board are not binding in this matter, but they're here for pre-application to get some insight and guidance from the board. May we hear the case for the applicant?
Hi, Alice Draper from two oh eight Trotting Park Road. Um, looking into subdividing my property, myself and my daughter own the properties. Hi, Ronnie. And, um, currently going through the zoning board, uh, for the lack of frontage on the properties, and they seem to be agreeable to the development of the only, they just want to make sure that all, everything, uh, all the issues are taken care of, and I guess the one issue that we're looking at is the length of the driveway, I guess. Um, any driveways over two-hundred feet long need a special permit or a variance. The existing driveway now is, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-plus, plus feet in addition to each section that branches off to the existing homes. I don't know if you have a copy of plot plans. I have some.
This is a matter that was before the zoning board of appeals, and we gave an opinion on, I think, at the last meeting. Is it the same plot plan as was submitted at that time?
Yes, it is, yep.
I think we looked at it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So I think we all have a copy of that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, they suggested that I need to look into the issue with the driveway, and I had spoken with Aaron, and he recommended I go this road and see what the recommendations you would have as far as, uh, how to go about this driveway issue, you know? Whether to, uh, go with the driveway and get a variance, or if, I don't know if we could, um, you know, have it as a development and have it as a city road, but then, you know, if we have to get into doing sidewalks and curbing and all that stuff, it would just be, uh, just would be financially feasible and stuff, so I'm looking to see what the board's recommendations would be as to best way to handle this project.
All right. Anybody else to speak with you this evening?
Uh, Ron is there, Ronnie Closey, engineer that was working.
How about any technical questions?
Do you want, have anything that you want to add at this point, Mr. Close?
Uh, no, I, uh, I see the list that, um, was recommended by, you see, uh, from Lisa Mayor, you know, and, uh, I don't see anything here that, um, wanted to be addressed, uh, uh, engineering there.
I don't believe you received a copy of that. I don't actually think I have a copy of that either. That was probably submitted to the zoning board of appeals when they were reviewing the variance request.
Yeah, I think that was the minutes, was that the minutes from the, one of the meetings?
Uh, yeah, I'm not really sure what I have there. Uh, one, one list the mayor was sent to, uh,
A zoning board, yeah.
Yeah, to, uh,
Yeah, the agenda for the zoning board.
Well, I, I see, uh, that's the only, uh, that I have, Lisa's mayor to zoning board of appeals.
Well, all that we've received at this point is the application to be placed on the planning board agenda, and we have a copy of the application that was submitted to the zoning board of appeals along with the plot plan. So we don't have any of the information from Lisa or any of the other information that you're referring to.
Well, I had looked into, uh, because like I said, the zoning board had issues as far as, you know, getting all your utilities up there and stuff, so I had spoken with the engineer's office to see what their requirements would be as far as, uh, getting water and sewer up there, so those issues have been taken care of. It's, you know, with just running, as far as running the sewer up. There are two sewer lines running up the driveway now. Uh, one of the things is they want a manhole at the, at the, where the three driveways meet, um, that's the requirement there really, and then as far as the water goes. The water department, I spoke with them, and we can run the one main line with three taps off it, and they want a fire hydrant at the end of the line. So as far as bringing water and sewer up, you know, does, those things have been taken care of. But like I said, the matter now is the driveway issue, and we just didn't know what's, you know, what the planning board would recommend as far as how to handle that.
Perhaps I can provide a little background on a discussion that Alice and I had, um, and why I suggested that a pre-application may be a good choice to go forward on this. Aside from the variance for the, um, frontage that Alice is seeking to subdivide this into a third lot, she's also gonna need a driveway special permit because the driveway to reach the third home, the proposed home, will be greater than two-hundred feet. So that is gonna be something that the planning board's gonna have to look at in the future. One of the questions that we were looking at is that there's, there's really two routes to go and to provide a home that she's trying to do here. Um, there's a kind of real incremental kind of process that she's going through now where she's seeking the variance for the frontage. She's going for the special permit for the driveway to actually gain access to the home. And then, uh, once that's done, request for an A and R subdivision to create the third lot. The other process is to go through a definitive subdivision, approval with the planning board, and that would actually potentially provide the frontage per the zoning code by creating a new street, uh, built to city standards. The problem with that, or the drawback, is that, as Alice alluded to, it is obviously a much larger financial burden to, um, to build an actual street than a driveway, but as, as far as a land planning perspective, one of the challenges with, with our subdivision standards, they're rather dated, and they have basically one standard for a street. Or the minimum standard is quite large, so that she's looking at a required right-of-way minimum of forty-five feet, and then at least enough pavement for two, two lanes, and then even perhaps a, um, a parking lane, which is, in my opinion, severely overbuilding a road for three homes. So the other option is to, um, under the second scenario, is to submit a definitive subdivision requesting a number of waivers from, uh, the street technical requirements for a, a narrower street, which as far as the land development idea makes a lot of sense. A smaller street is gonna have less of an environmental impact, and you're not overbuilding for three homes. Just as a side note, right now, we're looking at NDPD updating the subdivision plans, which would include an option for what we're calling a small street or a small lot subdivision, which would address this very scenario, where it's a smaller, um, street that's, that's being required, um, for projects, I think it's five or four parcels and smaller. So I'm just not helping you a lot right now. That, what we're working on is to address this scenario, because in Lowell right now, I think it's fair to say that a majority of our subdivisions going forward are gonna be these kind of small lot subdivisions, where it's gonna be short streets serving two to three to four, maybe five parcels. So that's a recognition that there's, there's a little, a blind spot in our subdivision regulations and our zoning code. So I guess what I wanted to have is a little discussion of what the process is either way, whether I choose to go for the special permit for a driveway length and then variance A and R subdivision, or a definitive subdivision. Both of them are gonna need a fair amount of kind of waivers or, you know, looking at, looking at the, the new street or road or driveway in its specific context without much, you know, uh, design guidelines from existing policies. The only one thing I want to add to this, Alice, and this is something we discovered, Tom and I, as we were looking at your plans a little bit more closely, um, in the first scenario where you're looking at the driveway length and you're looking at the A and R subdivision, there's also a provision in the zoning code for parcels with narrow lot widths, these so-called pork chop lots. And there's a situation where the, the narrowest portion of the parcel from the front of the house to the frontage cannot be less than eighty percent of the frontage. Um, and it's hard to envision that unless you're looking at it, but the long and the short of it is, is the right-of-way that you have where this, this, this finger portion of the pork chop is actually less than the eighty percent requirement, so you'd actually also need to seek a special permit under that ordinance. Um, it's, it's not, again, it's not gonna, I think, change your review that much, other than it's just another special permit that you would be looking at of the planning, and this is a planning board special permit too, as well. So hopefully that helps with a little bit. Feel free to ask me any questions, if I, what the, the options are for Alice.
And we did look at this last week in conjunction with the board of appeals, the application, of course, we didn't have the, this information that's being presented this evening. All we have basically was the plot plan. I know we didn't look favorably upon what we saw, but I'll open it to the board for any comments or questions.
Mr. Chairman, and it, one of the top criteria that we review a special permit for the driveway length is the safety feature in emergency vehicles, and I, it's tough to comment without actually getting some input as well from the fire department. Uh, I don't see, um, any design of some sort of a cul-de-sac or how, how a, um, a emergency vehicle would turn around once they got into that site. Um, it, I know it's not a public hearing, I'm just, um, interested to the petitioner, of all the abudders in favor of what you're proposing here?
Yes, I, I walked around, uh, and I spoke with all my neighbors, and I told them what my plans were to see if they had any issues with it, and they, they had no problems with it at all. They were all agreeable to it.
And one of the difficulties, this is an interesting neighborhood, because there's a lot of homes that are behind homes and in, in, in front.
Yeah, I think there were like three driveways, I think, like this on Trotting Park.
Exactly. Unfortunately, a lot of the waivers and that you're looking for are items that were put into the zoning code to address a lot of concerns that people had over the years. And, and, you know, in order to be able to accomplish what you're trying to do, you're really asking for quite a few variances from items, and Aaron just mentioned the, the most recent discovery as well. Uh, and a lot of work went into that as far as creating those types of, of lots, so I do have some difficulty based on the way it's being presented. I certainly would want some input from the fire department. Uh, I think that that would, that would weigh heavily as to how this would be configured, whether we would be looking at a, at a road or a driveway, and how that would be configured when you get to the, when you get to the three homes, and, and how that would be handled. And that's my, my comments at this, this juncture. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
And I would add to that, um, I think you'd be better served with a, a more detailed drawing showing the entrance and how you're feeding each, so to speak, driveway into each home, incorporating some kind of a cul-de-sac or turnaround area that, you know, if you presented to the fire department, that they would want to see. It's hard to visualize everything you want to do here on this particular plan.
All the lines on there?
The safety issue is, I think, paramount.
Uh-huh. I'm just thinking this, you know, even, even as it is now, I, um, just for the fire access to get to the both houses, it's the same, you know, it's not gonna be any different with the third house there really. Fire trucks have gotten up there and they just back into the other driveway and turn around to get out, you know?
Well, leave that to them.
And another thing too, I think one issue, if I may, when these houses were originally built, there was no water and sewer up. There was all wells and septic systems, so of course, I know that's another issue as far as, you know, the land size and everything else, and water and sewer up, that are up on the road now, so that's, makes things a little bit easier, I think, as far as developing goes, you know?
Yeah, well, sometimes the fire apparatus and safety equipment deal with situations that aren't that great, but what they look to do is whenever any development goes in, to make it better and to make it proper so that they can get in and out properly. As I look at it, I mean, if you were looking to put in a mini roadway with a cul-de-sac, I'm not sure how you could do that and still keep the lot that you want to maintain for the third home. Maybe some type of a hammerhead or something like that might work. I don't know. I, you know, you'd have to look at that a little more carefully, and as Mr. Frichette said, the fire, uh, the fire apparatus, I think, is paramount, whether they can get in or out, so. Mr. Chairman, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, as Mr. Frichette was saying, I think one of the reasons you need so many variances from the code is that there's been a lot of protections put in place to avoid situations where residents are putting homes, um, you know, in their backyard and, um, creating small driveways, and generally, I think that's viewed negatively by neighborhoods. I know I wouldn't want my neighbor to be putting a house in their backyard. Even though these two houses exist, I don't think that, um, I don't think that's a reason why adding another one, I don't think that adds to the positive reasons for adding another one. So part of the reason behind, I think, these preliminary hearings is to get a feel for how the board feels about, you know, what you're proposing. And I think we've been on record a couple of times now recommending denial of the, of the variances to the zoning board because of the frontage issue, because of the pork chop lot issue, and, um, honestly, I, I think that adding another house, um, to this, to this lot would, would, would set a bad precedent. You know, I, I think we have to be concerned on the planning board about precedents that we set for the rest of the city, and if, if we allow, you know, several variances to put a road or driveway or whatever it might be into this, into this property, that opens the door for other people to come in and say, well, you've set the precedent, I want to do the same thing. So I think there's a lot of concerns about adding this, this house here, and that's why there's so many variances that need to be avoided, and, um, I'm just telling you, my, my personal feeling on it, um, you know, I think I'd have, I, I see it as a difficult project. I see it as a difficult project. You know, probably the roadway would be the best way to go because that would provide more safety. However, that would incur more cost and things like that, and then there's also the access of emergency vehicles. Uh, is the road gonna be big enough for that, or is that gonna eat up so much of the lot that you don't have any more room for a house? There's just so many issues around this, that, just being honest with you, I'd have a hard time seeing a path to something that, that I'd be, I'd feel good about. So just, uh, just to give you my feedback on that.
I agree. It's, it's a difficult site to try and put another house back there, um, without compliance with the zoning requirements. Obviously, you need to seek all these variances, which are problematic. Uh, if there is a way to reconfigure things so that you did not need all the variances and were able to get some sort of a hammerhead in there so the safety apparatus can get in or out properly, then perhaps you could do it, but I'm not sure that the site is workable, is workable or not.
The only things really that don't meet the requirements are the frontage and that driveway length, are the only, the only issues that don't meet the zoning codes, right?
Well, that's correct, but, uh, I mean, the frontage is, is way off, and of course, the, the issue with the driveway length is the safety, so that's, that's a major concern as far as this board is concerned, so.
And, and just to be clear, that, there was one other that I, I found between, between the time we had a discussion about a week and a half ago, that the issue with the width of the lot, I mean, less than eighty percent, so that's another, that's a special permit, that's not necessarily a variance, but a special permit, um, for having a situation that generally the zoning ordinance is tried to, is trying to discourage, so that it's just, to be clear about the, the different elements that need to be addressed, is the driveway length, the variance for the frontage, the driveway length is a special permit, and then the lot width is a special permit as well. So those are kind of the three issues that you're looking at.
The lot width, which is basically, you're talking the frontage, yeah, or is that what we're talking about?
Um, sort of. If you actually, if you're looking, so you have the frontage, which is approximately, I don't know, sixty, if, if I'm reading this right, sixty-six feet of frontage for all three lots, for all three lots.
Yeah, for all three lots.
And then if you move back a little bit, say fifty feet off of the frontage towards the houses, the, the width of all three is now forty feet. So that's less than eighty percent of the frontage. So that triggers a special permit review in the zoning ordinance. And again, it's, it's triggered because there's an intention to discourage kind of these pork chop lots and making sure that there's enough space in between parcels to get back access and to make, make sure that you're maintaining a level of, um, I guess, land development design, quality of design in that, in access to the right-of-ways, so. So it's those three, if you go that route. The definitive subdivision, um, the reason that's been brought up, what I brought that up to you is that likely solves all of your problems, that, that process does, other than the fact that it, it's gonna require, if it's built to the standard of the subdivision standards, a much bigger roadway. And there is a waiver process through that process as well, but again, there's not really any kind of guideline for which the planning board can kind of look at that and say, well, this is a reasonable width, it's gonna, it's gonna be piecemeal from just kind of looking at other, other guidelines. We, like I said, there's, the subdivision regulations are being looked at seriously right now for update, um, hopefully by fall, to present to the planning board by fall, which I think would provide you an option that's different than the two that, that I've laid out, and perhaps is, is a nice middle ground, I think, because it's designed specifically for, or for situations generally like this. So, but since it's not policy right now, we can't really use that as, as guidelines.
So it's not looking good right now, bottom line.
Well, again, we're here for pre-application.
Yeah.
I think what we've got in front of us, we looked at it last week, the board didn't look at it favorably and recommended denial to the, to the board of appeals as it stands. I think you do have some issues, as was expressed by my colleagues, and I think Aaron gave some good advice that perhaps you may want to see how this new procedure may pan out for you as far as the site is concerned, but as it is right now, I think you've got a difficult process ahead of you, so.
Okay.
But we're certainly happy to look at it anytime, pre-application or otherwise. If you have any other thoughts on the matter and you want to bring it back before the board informally, we'll look at it anytime, and always happy to give you our thoughts on it.
Okay, I'll look into, uh, seeing what we'd have to do if we were to do the regulations with the turnaround and everything else, the cul-de-sac. I don't know what that involves, how much land area that involves and everything else, you know?
Great. I'm, I'm happy to, um, sit with you and kind of discuss what that would look like so you can kind of start thinking about if that's an option. Looking at this quickly, um,
I mean, obviously, even, even if, you know, the land area was there, and I mean, I still, it still wouldn't be feasible if I had to go putting in, you know, sidewalks and granite curbing and all that stuff, plus the fact that, I mean, Trotting Park Road doesn't have any sidewalks or granite curbing, so it would look a little ridiculous to have it in my driveway, basically, you know?
Mm-hmm.
It would look out of place, so I don't know if that's something that the board would, you know, be willing to grant a, you know, a variance on something like that, you know?
Well, it's certainly something we'd have to take a look at at that point, if that's, you know, the direction you want to go.
Mm-hmm. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thanks very much for coming in. Thank you. I'm gonna request if we take the next item out of order, I'd like to deal with the matter of Duville Senior Care at this point. Mr. Attorney Eliot just doesn't mind waiting, I'm sure.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good, good.
Thank you very much for, uh, hearing us now. Uh, I'm R. Paul Faxton, attorney for Duville Senior Care, and I have Naomi Prendergast, the president, with me. I also sent to Aaron on, um, Friday a series of letters, but, um, I have the final versions of those. I don't know if they made it into your, um, package, but I, I have for the board members.
I think you might as well pass out the, the latest iteration. I don't know if you've edited them at all. I, oh, okay. Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. All right. Sure. Before you begin, I just want to state for the record, of course, our chairman is not here this evening, and I recused myself from the last discussion regarding this matter, and Mr. Frichette, I believe, will also be recusing himself, because we are board members at Duville Senior Care. I understand that we're looking for recommendations here this evening. There are two board members available to give those recommendations, so with that being said, please proceed.
Right. I, I did receive Aaron's voicemail on that, and appreciate that any recommendation will be more of an informal variety to the, um, board of appeals, but I believe that may serve our purposes adequately. So, uh, the reason we are here is to follow up on our pre-application presentation we made, as well as some additional conversations we had with the planning department staff in terms of best procedures and making sure that the needs of the board are respected as we go forward. We will have a hearing a week from today at the board of appeals with respect to one specific variance request. It's simply a variance to, um, deal with the fact that we will need a waiver of the ten-foot side yard requirement. As you remember, uh, we own several lots on our campus through affiliated entities. We do that for various financing and reimbursement purposes. And our proposal, which as you remember is an approximately fifty thousand square foot transitional care unit, which will also house a, a small hospice facility as well as a new kitchen facility that will serve the entire Uville campus. We will be decommissioning our existing kitchen facility. Will be physically joined to the main campus building, obviously, because we're gonna be sharing staff, we're gonna be providing meals and the like. And because of that, and because there's separate lot ownership, technically, we need that variance. So that's what the board of appeals will be hearing, uh, this coming week. We've met with the board, we've met with the building commissioner, we've met with Aaron and others on the staff to go over that. What we are requesting is a, like, informal in this case, recommendation from the planning board that will support the following sequence of zoning relief that we're seeking. What we would like to propose is that first, we have our board of appeals hearing on July twenty-seventh with request to this dimensional variance, um, and that it goes to them with the planning board's recommendation, informal if necessary, uh, to go forward without any further, um, conditions or the like. Second, we come back to the planning board to complete our site plan review and with, uh, working with Aaron Clausen, the approval-not-required subdivision process. Unfortunately, we are still working through the detailed engineering work for that, and that's why that's not ready yet, but that would be the next step. Only after we've completed that step would we go back to the board of appeals and seek a special permit to expand the existing non-conforming use, because of course, this is a residential zone. Because of that sequence, we would ask that the planning board hold off its recommendations until that second piece. Why are we in this situation? Well, there's three reasons why we're in this situation. First and foremost, which is clearly distinguishes, distinguishes us from, I believe, just about any other applicant that will come before this board, is we have to go through a State Department of Public Health determination of need procedure, and under Health determination-of-need procedure. And under the Mass. Code of Regulations, Chapter 105, Section 100.306, we have to prove in our initial submission that starts the process and starts the clock running on that determination-of-need process, we have to approve that the site may be used for the proposed purpose. And that requires us to show either that it's an as-of-right use under the zoning, or that we've obtained the variance. We can have a special permit pending, that's allowed under the regs. We can't have a variance that we have yet to obtain. That's why we're looking to obtain this one discrete side yard dimensional variance right now. We're ready on that, we've teed it up. Once we grant that, then we can start the determination-of-need process. That's a long and arduous process. If we have to wait until our engineering is completed to do site plan review and complete that, and then get the variance, we will push back by several months, this process. That's a problem, because we're at a critical stage now in terms of financing, interest rates. We've gotten initial indications that it's a very favorable environment for our construction bids, and we also are trying very hard to put this in, begin site work spring, early summer of next year, to close this up before the winter, not have that potential for cost overruns and the like, and dealing with the sequencing of a major project at the wrong time of the year. The last reason is because substantively, this is not in any way a violation of the spirit of the process whereby the planning board gives the recommendations to the Board of Appeals. The bottom line is this, this ten-foot dimensional variance is meaningless without the special permit. We'll just have a ten-foot dimensional variance for two buildings that we control, and we won't have the special permit to pull our building permit and go forward. The planning board is going to have the opportunity to fully exercise its jurisdiction, to go through the entire site plan review process, and to give its recommendation before we go back to the Board of Appeals for the zoning relief we need to make this project viable and to go seek our building permit. And in that way, we're in a unique situation, and it's clearly distinguishable from other situations, and I believe, and would respectfully submit, is consistent with the purpose behind this sequence that's in the zoning code. Naomi, we'd be happy to speak to any questions you have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And again, I appreciate Aaron working with us to navigate this process, and also you hearing us.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll take the letter from Naomi dated July 20th, 2009, accept that into the record, and I'll ask if there are any comments or questions from the non-excluded board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm feeling a lot of pressure here in this particular...
Yeah, really.
So I think what you've proposed seems quite reasonable. I think you're right. The variance really doesn't limit our authority in any way, and it's obvious that it's required if you need to connect these buildings. I just, I wonder if you could clarify for me, and I know you may have spoken about this in your pre-application session, but you can refresh my memory.
Sure.
Why is there different ownership on these lots?
Well, there's several reasons. Number one is, it has to do with sometimes the way the reimbursement procedure works. So even within this project, this fifty thousand square foot project that we have, we have set up a tenant organization that will control the kitchen, a separate organization. Sometimes it has to do with whether the facility's going to be reimbursed by Medicare, Medicaid. So that's part of it. There was also historic reasons why we had financing that came in different phases. But these affiliated entities are all owned by the Sisters. They're all under that umbrella. And so that's why. And we now have existing mortgages that impact on certain of the lots that are not held always by the same parties. So you have to kind of go back in history and see the sequence of events that led to it. But that's the reason. I know that's maybe not, that's the reason. It's, I'm sorry if it's not as specific as you'd like, but that's the reason.
So ultimately, the Sisters own all of this property?
Absolutely. Yeah, they control all of it. These are just affiliated entities. I mean, Naomi, do you want to speak to that at all?
Sure. As has been stated, the Sisters are in control. But over the years, as Duville Senior Care has grown and developed, we have taken different approaches depending on reimbursement and the types of services that we need to be providing to the community. So it really is a way, as things have evolved, we have a large campus, but we're, we've been operating on that campus for forty-nine years. So as you can imagine, there have been a lot of changes over that forty-nine-year period, and so here we are today. And, but ultimately, yes, the Sisters are in control of all of the property and everything that happens on that campus.
One of the other points, and I was not involved, I want to say that, in prior financing, but one of the, one of the common ways of commercial financing now, especially more sophisticated or bond financing, which we've taken advantage of, is many of the lenders now require what's called a single-purpose entity for a borrower. The theory being that if I'm going to make a loan in a complex commercial transaction, I want the borrower to set up an entity whose only reason for living is to own that one property. And actually, in the articles or in the LLC certificate, it will say its only authority is to own that particular property. And they want to segregate that asset. The reason they do that is, is for bankruptcy. It makes it easier, if an entity goes into bankruptcy, to pull it out if you're the lender, if its only asset is that property, because it's harder for that borrower to argue that they need it, that they could reorganize successfully. So it's a technique that I now see with the larger commercial deals. Most lenders, including most sophisticated lenders, the life insurance companies, the conduit lenders and the like, they typically, in all my large commercial deals, generally, require the borrower to set up a separate entity. So that may have also been the case here, although that's prior to my time. The bottom line is, it's one entity that controls it, the Sisters, but for those historic reasons of financing and then the complexities of various types of healthcare reimbursement, it made sense to set up these different entities, and that's why we have the different lots. And to unwind that with multiple mortgages and the like, and multiple reimbursement streams is something that is not an efficient use of time. But it's a good question. It's a question that always comes up.
Right. Okay. So I really, I think that this is a bit of a technicality, because while it's, we have multiple lots here, they're really operating as a single lot. So I think waiving the side yard requirement is, you know, really not that much of an issue, and I'd be supportive of that. Are you on the agenda for the 27th now?
We are on the agenda. We met with the building commissioner, we got the letter from him indicating that we needed to seek the variance. We have submitted with the building commissioner's assistants and his staff. We are on the agenda. The city told us that they were publishing and noticing it up. We've done our butters list. So we are planning to speak to them on the 27th, and at that time, we'll have Phil Dowd and the architectural team and John Noonan to make the type of presentation that you folks heard at the pre-application. So our hope is that we will have that granted, and that that will then allow us to pull together our determination-of-need application. And all that the time this is going on, John Noonan, our engineer, is working on the site work necessary to submit a complete site plan review application to you folks. I can't give you an exact time, but it's coming up in the next, you know, we're trying to get it all done this summer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just make a comment to follow up on what Steve said. If this permitting process is what will make your project work, I don't have any problem with it unless there's other reasons why we can't follow this. Let's make it work. I mean, you provide some important community services here, and I'm in favor of that. And I think that this ten-foot side yard is, you know, not that important at this point.
All right. Maybe if I could just summarize what you're looking for, is a recommendation from this board seeking to have the ZBA variance first, and then the planning board's site plan review, and secondly, having this board recommend approval of the variance before the ZBA, correct?
Yes. That's correct.
Now, just note, for the record, that if the board does recommend favorably, it won't be considered a precedent, will still require other applicants to follow the usual sequence.
So do we need a motion to that effect?
I don't think we need a motion, but we need what your individual recommendations are.
That would be my individual recommendation.
As well as mine.
So we have two recommendations in favor, two abstaining, one absent.
Okay. Just to confirm, I think there's kind of two pieces of recommendations here, is the recommending approval of variance, and that the alteration in the typical permitting sequence is reasonable, given the circumstances that I think Paul laid out. From DPD's perspective, the two pieces that were important, that made us feel more comfortable with the change in the sequence, was the fact that there was this kind of state permitting process that was hamstringing them a little bit, and that by disaggregating the variance and special permit application into separate meetings, allowing for the planning board to actually do a very in-depth, detailed review that you typically do on a project, that then feeds into a zoning board of appeals approval, whether it's a variance or special permit. Given that, as it was proposed by Paul, I think we felt comfortable, and, you know, we're all kind of seeing what you're seeing, but the fact that those two elements were part of the proposal from Duville, that made us feel comfortable.
All right. So I think we're all set?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item under old business I'd like to take up is 1519 to 1527 Middlesex Street. The board will review a proposed plan addressing planning board concerns with respect to site development that deviates from the site plan that was approved by the board. Can we hear the case for the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, George C. Lightes Jr., 133 Market Street, Lowell, and I'm here this evening in behalf of the owner of the property, and I have the contractor with me here as well. I'm not sure exactly at this point whether you want to have Aaron point out. I think Aaron was good enough to give me a copy of the letter, which I believe is part of your record regarding the plan submitted to you. Unfortunately, from my standpoint, I got it as I was going on vacation. So I was only in a position to ring the alarm bell, shall we say, with regard to my client and the contractor. And he asked if he could come tonight, because I think he's going to point out in part that a number of things that were pointed out there have already been taken care of. If I may approach, Mr. Chairman...
Sure.
I have only one question. That's all. Maybe you should pass it around at some time. He'd like to speak to some of the issues that show in that picture. So I'm not sure, again, how you want to proceed, whether you...
Well, we all have the letter from Aaron, and we see what the points and the concerns were. So maybe if you just wanted to address some of the points in that letter, that would be fine.
I think that would be helpful, Mr. Chairman. You go ahead. Identify yourself.
Yes. Hi. My name is Rodney Fisher, 32 Willett Street. I'm the general contractor for that U Plaza. And good afternoon to all of you guys. Yeah, I just was, you know, working with Aaron and stuff, and definitely understand the frustration that probably he was experiencing, and I have to, you know, and the lack of time and us accomplishing all that and stuff, was because we was unaware of, you know, especially like the dumpster, we relocated that and stuff to where it was requested to relocate. And the other issue was that where we placed it and stuff, we thought that was, that was okay for it to be moved, because we moved it from where it was originally designed to be at. So we ended up with an empty space there. And then when it brought to his attention that he's made a reference that that was an ADA ramp there, which it isn't, that isn't an ADA ramp there, that because that door there isn't, that's been, that building's been there since 1985, and actually, there's not even enough room there for a wheelchair to even get into that stairwell there, or the hallway, because it's a three-by-foot hallway. That's just a...
But we do, in fact, meet the ADA requirements for occupancy of the building.
Of the building, yeah. The building meets it, but just that particular stairwell there, that ramp there. I just had that pitch for just to help the water runoff in that area, because we have a drain along that side of the lot there, just so that it didn't puddle up. And then the other issue with the island where you saw the cinder blocks, I spoke with Aaron probably a couple of days ago, I believe it was, about why we put them there just temporary, because of the cars that were coming in the lot were actually literally banged into the trees to which we just installed there. So I put them there until the asphalt, the contractors that I hired, which they're scheduled to do tomorrow morning, to put them islands in the way they was, you know, the way you requested them to be put in. So that was, it was just a delay. We was actually waiting on them, you know, because they was doing another big job for the city. So they were unable to get there when we requested for them to get there.
So those would be changed to the asphalt islands like you have on the other landscaping islands, is that correct?
Yes. And then I believe the other concern was the tree that's on that island. I believe there's a picture that shows the tree. Well, there's actually two plants there, and one of the problems we had was because twice already, we had someone actually come and take the trees after we planted them on the lot. I mean, literally ripped, uprooted them right out of the thing. They'd done it twice. And those trees are $250 apiece, so that's kind of pretty expensive. And we already kind of ran out of the budget for just even, you know, just putting that whole project together and stuff. So now I'm put those other plants in, just actually to fill in that whole space though. But those plants do develop to a reasonable height, you know, and hopefully, those are acceptable. But, you know, the trees that we had in there, which I guess they had mentioned that they wanted two of the same, you know, I don't think he had the money to build for to be able to replace them after they'd taken them twice on them already.
On the, along with the manhole, the front piece, you mentioned that they wanted us to put plants there. There's a manhole there. I believe I gave you a picture that showed that manhole that's there. That's why we tentatively designed that island there to kind of hide or shadow it a little bit, but it would be almost literally impossible to plant anything there because of the size of the symmetric diameter of that hub that's there. We had indicated putting some plant pots and plants there, and I've been told they've already been taken, but we're going to try and put some more there. It's not an area where you can dig, by the way, because it's gravel and then concrete.
Yeah, it's concrete. Yes, yes.
And then you might make, you might talk about the trees in front of the electric area.
Yeah, we placed four trees in front of the, where the gas meters are, and also put that six-foot-high rhino fence, which covers it. And that was the best location for it without restricting access to that, to the utility room and the utility services from reading the meters and stuff and blocking that walkway there.
So, okay. Thanks. I just wanted him to outline some of those things. Needless to say, they're being worked on already. Is everything perfectly fine? No, it's not. And we obviously, before we're asking for a final approval, want to make sure that everything is. As I said, based on the short notice, as far as I was concerned, to be able to rattle some cringes and get things done, it was not easy, but I think they've at least started to do a lot of those things. What I'd like to ask, and you can, obviously, we understand that a lot of these things are either conditions that we already have to take care of, or things that Aaron and the DPD folks would like us to look at and straighten out, notwithstanding the neighbors who I understand are complaining. I mean, we've spent, as you know, if you recall, with the condominium association, not only large sums of money, but time and effort trying to accommodate them. But I think Aaron will tell you that one of the things that precipitated, one of the comments here, was another phone call from Mr. Decker, who represents the management company there. And I don't think there's anything we can do to make those people happy, but we're still going to be working on it as much as we can. So what I would like to ask you to do is, we understand the totality of the final things that we need done. We need some time to do it. You don't have another meeting this month. You only have one on August 17th next month. August 17th happens to be the 41st anniversary of George and Mary Lou's wedding, and I don't think that she would be very happy as much as she knows and appreciates this board.
You can invite her down to see what you're doing.
I thought of that, Mr. Chairman. So I was wondering if we could just put this over to the first meeting in September, and hopefully have all these things straightened out by then.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to allow that. I visited the site on Saturday, and it's... I, I visited the site on Saturday, and it's work in progress at this point. I just would ask that you work closely with DPD, because what I would hate to see is we wait till September and, because it really, the process shouldn't be this, it shouldn't, shouldn't be this grueling for the petitioner, and it shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't be reviewing this, you know, four or five times. So I, I would just ask that you work closely with DPD to understand what has to be done and that, and that when they come back here in September, we're looking at a finished product.
I'll make sure they do, Mr. Fisher.
If I could actually, maybe you can address some of the issues on this a little, to a little bit more detail, but in maybe propose maybe a more expedient solution. Generally speaking, what the plan that was sent to you in your packets was a, a updated plan developed by the engineer, Jack Sullivan, addressing a lot of the concerns that the planning board and, and some of the questions that we had with the landscaping and, and site development. And generally speaking, it seemed to address the planning board's concerns. A larger, but speaking more broadly, my concern was less with the plan so much itself as what's being put in the ground. And what maybe, if this, you can, let me know what you think, is what maybe a quicker solution is if you want to approve this plan as, as the updated plan addressing the mitigation that, that the board is looking for, some of the earlier elements with a deadline, say 45 days from now, or 30 days, or whatever, to get all this stuff done to a satisfactory degree as it's shown on the plan. And then we could have myself, maybe some from the inspectional services department out there on that day. And then, since approvals are essentially part of the zoning ordinance at that point, the conditional approvals, then the inspectional services department can issue penalties based on zoning, zoning code, which would take the form of a fine. And that way, you don't have to come back before the planning, planning board again in September. This is, you know, just from my perspective, the plan is what we were trying to get to. This, the, the final issue is getting what's on ground, you know, tied up to the plan. The other comments, I think, address some of the other issues that, you know, may need to be dealt with at a later time. So I think, George, what you're referring to is the, the truck, tractor trailer, and that as a permanent or semi-permanent storage space. If that needs to be, be dealt with from a planning, you know, from a site plan perspective at a later time, that, that seems fine. If, if you want to keep the, or if you want to keep some sort of accessory storage or not, that needs to be shown on the plan. Maybe you don't want to, but rather than prolonging everything as one single package-
They're working on that now, and I think that's a good suggestion, a good idea, and would be more than, I, I appreciate your offer, and I think we'd be more than willing to do it that way if that's agreeable with the board.
Just want to throw that as maybe a more, a quicker, less administrative overhead on everybody's part, and just, the, the concern is just to get it done.
Chairman? I think that makes some sense. I think all the things that we're talking about are things that are on the approved plan, so we're just looking to get them completed. Just for clarification on, on a couple of those points, if I could, arborvitae, is there a plan to, to plant larger arborvitae's to cover that fence?
There isn't currently, Mr. Chairman, but I'm in the process of lobbying for such an event, so I think I can't guarantee that, but I will, I will say to the chairman and the board that I'm using my best efforts-
Well, I'm speaking, I'm speaking on behalf of the chairman now, because I know that was one of his major concerns. He didn't like those little trees, and you wanted that to be screened.
And Mr. Chairman, and if I may, and to, to address what Aaron was saying, the idea is to complete it as provided in his plan, and it clearly said the arborvitae would be three feet wide and six feet high, but that, that's, that's what's on the plan, that we approved. So, I mean, that's, that's the ramifications.
That's why, you're right, and that's why I said I'm, I'm putting my weight forward, my, my considerable weight forward-
I'm feeling much better about it.
-on making sure that that gets done.
So I think that that's fine. There's a discussion here about whether or not you're going to put in a safety fence or a security fence, but that's an issue that you deal with in the future. The truck trailer as well you're dealing with, and the timeframe. So what are we looking at for a timeframe, would you think, for completion?
I was thinking the end of the week. No, I'm just saying it's already, the trailers are already moved. I, I would say maybe the middle of August sometime, if that's agreeable. I don't know what Aaron's vacation schedule is.
Chairman, no, I think, I think we had in mind 30 to 45 days, something that gave you ample time to get it done, just so you have adequate time.
Sure.
And that we can go out and, and just at all one foul swoop, and know that it's done to a, to a satisfactory degree. And just one quick note on, on the fence, I'm glad you brought that up, Jerry, that it's not, it's one thing just to have something up there. That, that fence is kind of propped up, there's, we're, we're talking about a finished fence, and then, you know, the arborvitae as well, as, as said on the plan, that's six feet tall, something that's really going to screen it right now, rather than, you know, 10 to 15 years down the line.
I was figuring on getting a shovel and you and I doing the placement down somewhere along the way.
Nobody wants that.
Mr. Chairman, you know, obviously, if the board feels comfortable with that plan, I'm okay with it, but personally, I'd feel more comfortable, given the sensitivity of this project, sensitivity to the neighbors, and the fact that it's been around a couple of times now, having it come back before us for approval so that we can view the, the project under completion, rather than, rather than giving conditional approval now. If the majority would prefer to go that way, I'll go along, but personally, I'd feel more comfortable letting them come back, you know, in, in September.
I certainly would have no objection to that. If we wanted to continue to the first meeting in September, that would be plenty of time to complete everything you need to complete. We'll see where we are then. Hopefully, everything will be done, and we'll wrap it up, so.
I, I had a couple of questions too. Regarding the screening, it almost looks like another panel to that fence is needed, because even a bigger arborvitae-
We just had that discussion.
Okay.
And I think we're going to work on that as well.
Yeah, I mean, and personally, the, the meters, I don't think ever should have been put on the front of the, of the building there. That's not a good location for them, right? But none, they're there now, nothing we can do about that, so I think making a little more effort to screen them would be appreciated. So, sounds like you're already on, down that track. You know, the dumpster location, you know, Aaron, I don't know how you feel about this, but even if it's not a handicap access, I just, it seems inappropriate to me to have the dumpster half on the sidewalk and half in the parking lot. I, I'd like to see it fully in, fully on the lot, you know, and not, and not kitty-corner in there.
Well, actually, it's been on the lot, because every time when they come and empty it, they misplaces it in the wrong spot.
Ah.
I brought it to his attention several times, so that just happened to be a day that Aaron came out there and it wasn't in the right place.
I see.
I literally, when it was empty, I actually literally pushed it onto the, the parking lot myself where it was empty.
Right. Looks like, though, it's pretty tight there, though, where the fence is.
Well, there's actually enough room.
There is enough room?
Yeah, there is actually enough room for it to sit on the-
All right, well, maybe we can just work that way. I had a question also about the, the island where you have the cinder blocks that you removed. Is that going to be a full island, or is that just going to be that-
Well, it's going to be, just as it is on the draw, no, it's going to be angled like that, because when they walked up and Aaron and them walked up, did a walkthrough before and stuff, the way they was actually designing is not wide enough for us to actually really plant anything.
I see, okay.
So he suggested that we put it like that, so at least that it's, you know, complies with some type of form of where we can plant those trees in the back there, and give it enough space for it to grow.
Okay.
Stephen, if I could just provide a little background on that too. I went out there with Sean Callahan, who was our design planner, had some landscape design experience. We looked at the islands that were, that were placed there. They're like two feet wide. The likelihood of a tree surviving that longer than a winter is probably extremely low. And this was a solution that we thought could work. We've seen it in, more commonly in center aisles, where it's at the apex of four parking stalls, and so it, it provides enough room for each stall to be, to be adequate, having an adequate, adequate space for a car, but also enough, it's about five feet on each, on each side, so it's enough landscape for the tree to survive. So this was kind of a, a solution that maintains the number of parking spaces, still provides the tree per the zoning code, and, and reasonable expectation that the tree will last a little, little while.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a thought on the dumpster, I don't know if you're able to do this, but there's a, you know, a fence to the left of the dumpster, and if the dumpster is sited properly on that spot, do you have enough room to put a fence on the right to the, of the dumpster so they can't put it on the sidewalk? Or is that too tight?
No, it's too tight.
Okay. We wouldn't want them to be hitting that fence.
Right.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I just have one comment about the dumpster. I, you know, that really strikes me as not a very effective way to do that, if I'm looking at this picture, right? Should not that being totally enclosed and gated, to comply with current regulation? I mean, it really should be on a pad-
He informs me that he's been talking to the owner about moving it in another spot.
I mean, that's, that's rinky-dink, really.
Perhaps we can find a way.
Yeah, I would take a hard look.
I'll certainly make it clear that there was a suggestion to that effect, Mr. Larkin.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Anything further? Our first meeting in September, I believe, is Thursday, September 10th. Is that acceptable? Do we have a motion to that effect?
I believe that was the motion that I had made, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continue to September 10th.
Thank you very much.
Good luck and happy anniversary to you and your wife. I'm sure she's a saint.
Putting up with me for 41 years, guaranteed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under old business, we have Plain Street Target. The planning board will review a request by the applicant to amend the site plan approval, removing condition four regarding all traffic signal hardware installed by the developer to be black in color and retain the standard brushed aluminum with yellow encasements already installed. May we hear the case for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, George Sealeides Jr., 133 Market Street, Lowell, representing Target this evening. But I was remiss a little bit at the outset, but if the board would indulge me for a minute, I, I too want to just make a comment on the, the loss of Mr. Linehan, who was, in fact, as Mr. Hall indicated, a giant in our community. You know, as a young lawyer, I came along and, and you know what it's like, Attorney Clermont, when you deal with some of the older folk in town, sometimes different, they, they treat you in different ways. Well, you know, Mr. Linehan couldn't have been any better to me. Of course, he was sort of in the middle of my father, who was a generation ahead of him, but always enjoyed telling me stories about my dad and, and court events and things like that, and was just always so very nice to me. Truly a gentleman and, and a wonderful man, and it's a great loss to the city. So, thank you for that opportunity. That said, I, I know you're well aware of the fact that, that I have been throughout representing the Target Corporation in their project up on Plain Street, and hopefully you've all been by there to see the huge progress that's been made there and all the wonderful things that are happening. You know, this is a, they're spending almost $40 million in the city for this project. They're going to be hiring at least 250 people along the way. In fact, they're in the process of hiring them now, and we're not far away, hopefully, from opening up, which obviously is also going to generate some good serious real estate property tax revenues for the city. That said, I probably somewhat misquoted, or misstated, my request for the evening here, because the fact of the matter is, if you look at the condition in question, I think that I can state that we in fact complied with the condition to the extent that we could, and, and the folks at, at Target wanted me to make that very clear too. What happened here is that there basically were two sets of lights that, that were to be dealt with. One was the one, obviously, the entrance to the plaza there itself, and the other was the possibility, you might even say probability, that the state would want a light at the bottom of the ramp, on the inbound ramp of the connector, to get to the Target location. And we, the Target agreed that we would go along with them as being black, as long as that was a condition and that was not a problem. There's certainly no additional cost to my client, whether it's yellow or black, so then unfortunately, and, and I don't know that I have to go into any great detail and that it serves any purpose to go into any great detail, for one reason or another, in a series of miscommunications, I'm going to say, or misunderstandings and miscommunications, what in fact happened is, the folks at Target were told by the state that they needed to put up yellow lights at the base of the, of the connector, because that was their jurisdiction, and that's what they were requiring. After that, as to how and, and whether or not something could have been or should have been done to adjust that, I don't think it's worth talking and fighting and arguing about, and Aaron was good enough to point this out to me a couple of weeks ago, and we went to work looking into, do you repaint? And by the way, in every, in, in, as, as regards, I want to make this clear, as regards the condition itself, they met it in every way, that being that they, they put in, in the things that they had control over, they, they did things the way they were supposed to be. Anyways, that said, as, as it turns out, in trying to find out what way we could, could if possibly, make a change or do something about this, it was just determined that it wasn't, wasn't practical at this point to do it. So I had discussions with the, I went through channels, the city manager's office, who of course referred it to Adam, and Adam and, and Aaron, I know consulted on this at length in terms of, of how this should be handled. The most significant thing that everyone has to understand here, and this is kind of bizarre, I don't know if you remember this from, from our initial presentation to the planning board, Target opens its stores all over the country twice a year on the same day. So they have one store opening in October and one store opening in March. The world otherwise could come to an end, that's the only way they do it. So when I talked to the Target people, they said, you know, the most significant thing to us, because we're in the process of hiring people, getting ready not only to open a new store, but hopefully for a great Christmas opportunity for everybody in the city, we need to know that we're okay and everything's going to continue on according to, to plan, according to HOIL. So at that point, that's why I filed this request with you folks, so there wouldn't be any issues on, on the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, which of course is so critical. In, in the, while we were doing that, and Aaron and I and Adam continued to have some discussions, the Target people, who I should point out, have already generously spent an additional $15,000 to do handicap pedestrian ways from walkway and curvings and whatever from their side to the car wash side. We talked about, you know, even though it was not, as I said, any, any savings of putting a yellow as opposed to a black, was there something we could do otherwise to sort of help the city? And we, and they're willing to do that, we just never, I think one of the major things we talked about was some pedestrian painting for, to help in the neighborhood, and, and we're pretty well close to doing something like that, but we don't have, shall we say, the, the writing, the final agreement that would make that variant, or I shouldn't use the word variants in this setting, make that situation be workable for everybody. So I'm asking, I'm here tonight, and I'm asking that we either waive this condition or consider it completed, since, since they did what they were supposed to do, which was everything that they could paint black, they painted black, and when they put any traffic lights up, traffic materials. And, and, and in my conversations this afternoon with Adam- And in my conversations this afternoon with Adam, we agreed that without having to specify what else we might get involved with accommodating each other with, we would ask that you, as I said, either negate or waive this particular condition, with the understanding that obviously we're going to make another agreement with the city, subject to the mutual agreement of the parties.
Thank you very much. Aaron, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think George gave a pretty good outline, but generally speaking, you know, it does seem to me that the provision of the black hardware was just one of those things that there's not a really, it doesn't seem to be a terribly clear process with Mass Highway. If it is, it's not clear to us, but that they, Target, they being Target, seemed to do as best they could to get it installed. You know, and once it's in, now that it's in, the options that we have to get it, you know, black in color are kind of limited in feasibility. Painting them isn't very a long-term, a very good long-term solution, you're talking about, you know, maintenance of it. And from my understanding, that, you know, if Mass Highway gives us the go-ahead to do that, it's set up to the city to maintain that. And although the aesthetic value of it is, is nice, if you go up in the corner of Chelmsford and Plain, it's black hardware there, it looks pretty good. Having, having it painted just doesn't quite get us to where what we're looking for, and then swapping it out is a huge time and expense. And as George pointed out, the opening is one day, we don't, there's no value for anybody for it to be delayed a half year or whatever timeframe that would be. So my understanding of discussions are quite good with Target and with some other public benefit, that they'll be able to come to some agreement. So I think from the DPD side of things, we're pretty satisfied with the effort at least that was put into the condition, and then also on the back end, now that we're in the situation that Target's willing to do some improvements that, you know, that we can come to agreement on, so, you know, I think it's a reasonable situation.
Great, great. So basically, looking for a motion to waive the condition that the, that the signals be painted black.
Correct.
Any questions or comments from the board?
It's just an aesthetic thing, Aaron.
Yeah, the black signal hardware, it started, from my understanding, downtown in the historic district, and, you know, the response has been pretty, I think, supportive, it's really good response, it looks great. It really sends the hardware to the background, it's no longer this thing you see. And generally speaking, citywide, whenever we put in signals, it's black wherever possible, now, not just the historic district. So I think Lowe's was the first project where it was something that was a condition of a project approval. Slightly different situation, or maybe largely different situation, because it was, you know, city jurisdiction flat out, we knew it the process, and it's just, it's pretty simple. But since, in this case with Target, it's a Mass Highway jurisdiction, it adds a couple layers at least of complexity. The only one thing, is I guess, as far as the waiving of the condition is, you know, waiving it under the consideration that Target's willing to work with city administration to come up with a reasonable, you know, solution or reasonable project in its place.
Fair enough.
I would make a motion for the waiver of the black hardware in this particular case.
You know, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair approves.
We all thank you very much, and I'm headed back to me.
There you go.
Thank you.
Next, under other business, we have notices from abutting towns. We have a few illegal notices we received from the town of Drakett and the town of Tuxbury. Unless anyone has any comments or questions, I'll take a motion to place them on file.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Placed on file. And then we have the zoning Board of Appeals agenda, presented to us for our recommendation. There were two matters on. One we dealt with already for Duville Senior Care, and the second matter is a request that's going before the ZBA for variance. The applicant is Kelly Paul, care of David Kelly and Lisa Salata, 14 Hazel Street. Their petition is to construct a farmer's porch without required front yard setback, according to Article Five, Section 5.1 of the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I wish we had the petitioner here, because I really have, we've gotten a package this nice for something this.
It's excellent printing.
Yeah, there's a lot of detail.
And, and the detail of what they're proposing, certainly as I look at this, I think that when you look at the, the actual variance that they're, they're looking for is, is three and a half feet, and I think the porch will add aesthetically to the house and will be in keeping with the neighborhood, so I certainly would have no problem with what's being proposed here.
It does look like the farmer's porch that they want to put on, they could probably put about two and a half to three feet, and they're looking to go at six feet, and it looks to be consistent at that dimension with the neighboring house to the left, so I would have no problems either, as far as that request is concerned.
Oh, I have no problems, therefore, I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
General correspondence, we had one A and R notice Aaron gave us regarding 57 Ridge Road and 130 Buttonman Road, and 1559 Lowe's Way, which was formerly 790 Chelmsford and Composite Way, just for our attention. Any comments regarding that? Any other further comments from planning board members?
I don't know.
Aaron, anything else?
No, not as of yet. There's, well, there's two projects that came in Friday for site plan review for the August meeting. One's in 225 Middlesex Street. It's the building, it's the, I think it's part of the Appleton Mills complex, but it has the charter school in it. They're coming in for site plan review for about 75 condo units and restaurant space, looks like it has a performance space as well. And then the Moody Street project that Coalition for Better Acre had presented as a pre-app is going to come in during the August meeting as well.
Great, very good. All right, once again, condolences to the Linehan family, your, and our thoughts and prayers. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
So move. Thank you very much, everyone.